It came somewhere.
It didn't come.
It came from the thing in the middle.
That's what I thought.
Why are you having an issue?
It comes from your laptop?
No, it comes from there. We're trying to, we can't, that doesn't, the sound and quality and that, I mean, it's good if you're watching live, but for you guys and anyone here, so we're trying to figure out a different way to get another soundbar or Bluetooth. But we thought it originally came from the TV, but I, I thought it always came from there, so. But IT doesn't recommend setting up a separate speaker for that setup. Maybe we can switch the sound from that to the TV, get a soundbar so that everyone can hear better, because we're always like this when someone zooms in and can't hear, so. Trying to improve our quality output that we give to everybody.
Well, they just need to come to the meeting, I guess. Shall we rise for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. We're going to start with, we have minutes of our Board of Selectmen public meeting held on January seventh. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
John abstained.
Because you weren't here.
He wasn't here. That's correct. And now I have a, um, minutes of our non-public meeting held on January seventh.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I get abstaining.
Thank you. Sunny. Oh, she's still signing.
Still signing the purple book.
Don't miss any. Okay, our first order of business is to amend the highway safety grant.
Hi, yes, a couple years ago, we had to amend, um, mean language for the highway safety grant, and now they would like to give us a little bit more money, so now we have to amend the amount of the grant that they're going to give us. Um, Evan Belanger has applied for this grant for us, and it looks like it is to purchase two laptops or tablets, and I believe these go in the cruisers, and that comes with the docking stations, the printers, the adapters, and USBs for the GPS. So this is just to accept the additional amount from the grant.
Does everything have to be re-signed?
Uh, I do believe, I was just looking at my email from Evan, I think you just might have to, um, I have one of the copies reinitial and resign as, because you and chief have signed as the, um, subrecipients.
Okay, alright, alright.
After you motion, then I'll have you sign.
Alright, would someone like to make that motion? Or, um, we, we never object to grants, I guess, so, would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to amend the current FFY twenty-five highway safety grant, twenty-five dash zero one six, agreement originally awarded amounts sixteen thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars to twenty-six thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents for the purchase of two laptops and all the associated equipment, as stated in the agreement.
One second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Hearing none, that passes, and then I'll just sign an initial before I leave. Um, next item is request for highway department vehicle purchase. Must be, good.
So as you know, um, we are, we have a warrant article for unanticipated funds to go into capital reserve for the highway department. The amount, I can't remember the exact amount, but, um, as you know, as you know, we were going to, uh, give Patrick one of our vehicles and purchase, um, purchase a new, uh, one-ten pickup with a dump body and a plow. I got some pricing, um, of course Patrick, he had got some pricing on pickups, um, I got some pricing, um, John initiated a contact for me, um. We've got some incredible pricing on pickup, um, and at this time, I think we should take advantage of it, and I have money right now currently in my capital reserve, uh, in the equipment fund, and I think we should move along with purchasing this. Even though the warrant article hasn't passed, but I, I have, I have the funds.
So then, if the warrant article passes, those monies just go back into re, to replenish?
Correct.
Okay.
And, I mean, I, I mean, the pricing that I got, I mean, it was, I think the pickups, uh, with a nine-foot-six plow, um, B-plus stainless steel plow, um, the, uh, flathead dump body with an electric hoist, um, removable sides. Price came in at about seventy-four thousand dollars, the pickup itself was about fifty, so, uh, it's just, I think it's just, it's an incredible deal, and, and actually, at this time, we, we should really recognize John.
I was just gonna say, how did you get seventy-four thousand for all that?
Well, I'll tell you. Look at that guy right there, this isn't the first deal he's gotten down, and I think we, we really should recognize how much money he saved us in the past, and he will probably hopefully save us in the future. This is, uh, this is a really, really excellent deal, and I think we should just, I can, the body will be ready in March, if we can, if I can pull the trigger, and, uh, I think he just wanted to make this happen. Patrick's a re, Patrick's a re-diner for a pickup, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to clarify that Patrick is the department head of the building and grounds, so it's not like we're giving it to.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, no, oh, no, no, no.
Just for those in the audience and online, making it sound like we're giving away it to.
Yeah, I thought that was a given.
You never know. Well, um.
Your approval, I, I think, I think we should, I think we should pull the trigger on this, like I said, I have the funds.
Yep.
I mean, I have, I think I have, currently have a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars saved up in my capital reserve, because we've been putting a little bit away in savings every year, and, um, once we give the reverse of that, it won't affect mine, it won't affect my equipment plan at all.
That will leave a hundred and eleven, eight, seventy-two.
In that line.
And then the if the warrant passes, an additional one-ten.
And what, what typically does a vehicle like this cost without, um?
I, I, my, I anticipated it was gonna be about ninety thousand dollars.
That's our, that's.
The way that I, the way that I wanted to spec it out, and you guys have the specs for the pickup, and the pricing, and, um, yeah, like I said, my, my, my estimate on it was my estimate was, I thought it was gonna be about ninety thousand dollars.
I assume it's a GMC? Good, it's not Ford.
We purchased other vehicles from this company?
Yep, yep. I mean, that wouldn't be mine, Ford wouldn't be my first choice.
The only thing, if this motion does pass, the wording of it should be changed. It's written up for the amount from Weir's Buick, they'll say, ah, they're a GMC Buick dealer, and another month, there won't be a Buick dealer. They're selling the Buick franchise off and just keep the GMC. So it'd be wise to have GMC instead of Buick, committed to them.
So it'd be Weir's GMC?
Yes.
Okay. Travis?
Uh, question quickly, if, God forbid, the, uh, the particle fails for your fund, how, how will this impact your plan for changing your vehicles next year, since you won't have the extra hundred and ten possibly?
Um, I mean, it'll, it'll impact, of course, but I, I think at some point, we're gonna, those funds are gonna have to be delegated, and we've got those funds, um, I don't, I don't know what happens if the warrant article doesn't pass, but I still have, um, I've still requested sixty thousand dollars this year. I'll have a balance of a hundred and less than a thousand dollars, so I'll still have, my, my plan won't be affected that much, it just, it may put, it may put my plan for replacing the loader, which I plan to do next year, a year after, it may, it may pull that up a year away.
Right, but we're not in, like, if it does happen, we're not in dire need of a loader, like, it's not broken, broken, broken?
No.
But the other problem is, the other issue is, is that Patrick's running around in a truck that's, I'll say, not, not healthy.
I'm just trying to plan for future, that's the worst case scenario, future.
I gotta tell you, the, the opportunity for the grant and getting that truck and having that slip into the plan as a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar purchase or, you know, zero dollars, it's just, that, that has helped us moving along. It's just, that, that helps, that helps the, that helps the plan. That helps, that helps her.
And then the problem is, is if his truck, that's not, it's on its last leg anyways, if it dies on us in the middle of the year, we're gonna be facing that anyways. But, not as, not as good a deal possibly.
Well, what you're not seeing is, we're actually taking something of a moderate value and not showing that moderate value to that department and charging that department that moderate value to buy a used truck. So that money actually reduces the seventy-four thousand dollars here, which, that's left pocket, right pocket, I'm gonna say here, and the time and work that's gonna save him to have that extra power vehicle in downtown here is really gonna make a difference. And we, we will take.
Right before that pickup's still worth a little bit of money.
Oh, yeah, they, they.
So if you, if you, you know, if we.
The two-wheel-drive pickup, that we're gonna take out of Patrick's stock, I'll take it to auction like it with the police cruiser.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, when I, when I initially looked at the pricing, I thought, when I worked at the seventy-four thousand, I thought that was just for the pickup. And when I saw that it included the body and the plow and everything else, I was like, you know, it's, it's kind of a, I don't know, I didn't know.
Craig, I just wanted to clarify, because I think you made a comment, but I'm not sure if you were confused, you did get the sixty thousand into your capital reserve in twenty-four.
Correct.
But in twenty-five, the warrant article is hundred and ten, funded through fine balance.
Fine balance.
There isn't a separate one for sixty?
That's right.
Okay, so you, so it's the one-ten, not for taxation or nothing.
So if that does pass, we'll still pull up, pull up a balance after buying this pickup of two-hundred and.
Twenty-one.
Yeah, two-hundred and twenty-one dollars.
And if it doesn't pass, there's only one eleven.
Okay, alright. Any other questions or concerns? Sharon?
No.
I'm good. No? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a twenty-twenty-five GMC Sierra thirty-five-hundred HD for the highway department in the amount of seventy-four thousand two hundred and forty-one from the, well, the.
It's gonna be Weir's GMC, right?
Yeah, yeah. Funds to be expended from the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund.
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Hearing none? Okay?
Thank you again, John, for your advice.
Yes, I, I think, I don't think taxpayers understand.
Should know.
Right. Taxpayers don't understand how much he has saved us in the vehicle department, um.
Well, that's what happens when you have somebody that's got forty-five to fifty years' experience in the car business, it just helps.
It does, we take advantage of it, that's for sure. Alright. Um, twenty-twenty-four encumbrances.
Uh, yes, everywhere, I bring forward to you a list of items that, um, we can encumber forward to the next year, so they were, there are lines that didn't get spent, um, but that we can re, you know, redesign those to use, um, first in twenty-five versus your operating budget. So it's the lines that didn't get expended. Uh, the first one, the Winnie, the Winnie scenic trail, we've been carrying that one on the encumbrance list since two thousand sixteen, I would suggest, um, whoever's really in charge of that trail, the money gets spent or we move it to a capital reserve fund, so that we don't, the auditors don't like you to keep encumbering.
Oh, is that one?
You traditionally encumber for one year and spend it.
But weren't those funds, um, to be used for the maintenance of that trail if we needed to do tree removal, um, pay, repaving, or if there was damage to the trail? I thought that that's what that was.
And then you also have another one for the brat trail.
Oh, alright, maybe I, maybe I'm getting them confused.
I don't know where this one.
And I think there was money that was also to be used towards expanding the trail.
I think that's the capital reserve we already have for the brats, because it says phase one and two, um, but it's here, it's covered, we're gonna move it forward, it's eighteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-six, so it's something we should decide to do, you know, maybe just move it to a capital reserve in the future and just get it off our books, and then just keep it into an interest-bearing savings account.
Okay, so if we, oh, just, if we moved it to capital reserve, because I just, I get, sometimes I think, oh, we got eighteen thousand dollars, oh, you can't touch that, because it's in this account. I guess my question to you is, and again, I could be wrong, I thought this eighteen thousand was possibly, at some point, as a trail gets older and things happen, that this would be monies to use for that. But if we move it into a capital reserve, are we able, if, I don't know, I'm, I don't, say a piece of the trail falls and, you know, a culvert goes in or something, and we gotta fix it? Can, are we able to expend those funds out of the capital reserve, or do we have to take it to the voters?
Uh, no, so you would, I would suggest that you would mirror your capital reserve, the creation of the capital reserve, however they mirrored it back whenever they created this in two thousand sixteen, or, I don't know if these were donated funds or raised funds, I'd have to really look back at, you know, at history in two thousand sixteen.
I think that they received a lot, some of, I think this, these monies came from, didn't it come from the state, or didn't it come from, help me, guys?
Not sure where it came from.
I can't remember.
My, I only, when we refer to this brat trail, the last, two years ago, when the construction started on a house over by the beach.
Yeah.
They logged down the brat trail. They put, they put log trucks right on that trail, so if that trail got hurt, we shouldn't be held responsible for any funds.
We had a bond.
We had a bond on it.
You got a bond on it?
We had a bond on it.
Okay.
For that reason.
For that reason? Alright. Um, okay, I mean, I don't have a problem creating a capital fund, because you, you get interest at least on it, not that you get a lot, but you get some, um, as long as we're not, you know, what is it? Cutting off our nose despite our face.
Right, no, it was created to, you know, be explicit, you know, for the repair, maintenance.
Right.
Of said trail, but expansion, but for now, we'll encumber it in, on the books, um, for twenty-five, and then we can, you know, throughout the year, work on what we do with it moving forward.
Okay, alright. Okay.
Very used to it, um, we had access in the GG telephone line, which is the general government's, um, general government heat, because we also had encumbrances from last year, um, that we hit first, is why we had the overage there. Also, we had encumbrances last year for the mill heat, that's just why we have extra here in twenty-four. Um, the PD Cruiser line, I'm still waiting the invoice from the dealer, so that may just get spent either next week or this week, but just in case it doesn't, I just wanna encumber it, um, forward.
Yep.
Uh, that should hopefully come off relatively soon.
Did I see a cruiser, new cruiser? Did I?
Last Thursday.
That's what I thought, I thought I saw one sitting there, okay. Sorry.
So they can send me the invoice?
Yes.
Um, the general government historical, we have access there because we, um, during the default budget, we had cut the cleaning services, um, and hopefully we can bring that back, so we're gonna move that forward. We had unexpended, um, twenty-twenty-four highway block grant funds that we can encumber forward for next year to use. And then the conservation had three thousand unspent in invasive species. It looks like a lot that we're encumbering forward, but if you take out the, um, the cruiser that, you know, we already received, goes, and I'll pay that, and then the highway block grant, that's not money raised through taxation. Um, so really, after you take out those two numbers, um, you're really only encumbering about sixty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-nine.
Yep.
I also wanted to throw in this as a consideration while we're encumbering, so, um, you've decided not to fund the fireworks for Old Homeday in twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was kind of talking with Danielle and forward-thinking, and, um, for twenty-five, the board has supported the fireworks in the operating budget, but the.
Budget committee did not, they were pretty adamant about it, too. They were very adamant about not supporting it, yeah.
So if the budget passes, there technically is no funds for Old Homeday fireworks, unless the board chooses to move funds around. My suggestion would be, um, you're well within your right to do that, um, and if it doesn't pass, it's still in the default because it was still there from twenty-four, so we do have the funds, but kind of where I'm going with this is, um, if you encumbered the fireworks for twenty-four, unspent to twenty-five, you have that buffer. But, I mean, Danielle was thinking, and I'm kind of playing hopscotch with the, with the money here, in twenty-twenty-six, America turns two-hundred-and-fifty, and kind of forward-thinking of maybe the town could think of a Fourth, uh, Fourth of July birthday celebration, and you could move some of those fireworks funds to fund that, and it wouldn't, you know, affect your budget anywhere.
I'm not the fireworks girl.
You, you lied to Peter today, and you tell Paul it's okay tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I think the budget committee has made an unwise decision with that politically, but I think, I wouldn't have an issue encumbering it.
Travis, I. I mean, I guess, you know, we can move it forward, I, I don't.
Just encumber it, and we haven't spent it, so.
Right, 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 it's there, um, what we do, and again, you know, that was a hard thing, because who knows if Danielle doesn't get, um, donations?
And she might still get donations.
That's exactly right, we kind of talked about that, right? And I know there was a gentleman here on one of the nights that was interested in, in possibly coming forward and donating, so, um, you know.
If your goal is to still try to fundraise, and if not, then any of this unspent will just go back to the general fund and offset taxation when you set the tax rate.
Okay, alright, I guess that's probably the way to go. Okay?
So you could make a motion, um, now that I, so the fireworks balance is seventy, uh, seven thousand five hundred, um, so you can make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four encumbrances as presented with the addition of the fireworks.
So moved.
Executive. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none? Okay, health agencies, budget restoration consideration, that's the one that we were a little confused on.
Uh, yes, I provided you with this sheet, um, on the top section of that sheet is the minutes from last March when we were, um, relooking at the default and making reductions so that we could still meet the goals of the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
Um, when we were cutting the health agencies, and I think at that point, we had cut them by twenty-five percent kind of across the board, um, it was made, the comment was made that, you know, we're gonna cut that now, but maybe towards the end of the year, when we see where we are budget-wise, we would consider restoring that. So I just wanna bring it forward, if you guys still would like to restore the health agencies to their, um, original, not their original request, but what was the default budget original? So that would have been the, if you see the column that says the current year budgeted, which is technically the default budget, um, and that balance remaining is what we would restore back to them, which is a total to eleven, eleven organizations for a total of two thousand ninety-eight dollars.
So this is coming from twenty-four's budget?
Correct.
It's a little confusing, doesn't, I think we should leave it alone.
I'd say, I, I would be okay with leaving it.
Absolutely, leave it alone, you know, just comment, just think about it.
I, I think it should be left as it is.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'll make a motion to leave it alone.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that, too.
Alright.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposition?
So John and Sunny. So the motion was to, to, no? Did you all vote?
Is it to, is it to restore everybody's?
Yes, to there.
Alright, because I was just asking, because I have this one highlighted, and I was concerned that it was just this one.
So it was to, no, it was to restore the balance, and then if you were going to consider restoring that, I was also going to consider that you restored the Memorial Day, because that was for the American Legion, uh, and they orgowed their donation from us to do decarsis of eight members, right? So I figured if you're gonna consider that, you should consider the Legion as well.
But Sharon, the motion that was made was to not do it. Was to not restore it.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that now, it's just, um, so, in saying no, then the Legion wouldn't get any money this year for Memorial Day, correct?
Not this, not, no, this is.
Twenty-four.
Okay.
We're in, we're in arrears.
Yes, alright, yes, I agree. Okay. Well, just, is it in the, is it in twenty-twenty-five?
Yep, no.
No, twenty-four.
Twenty-four. High-gons.
So if you need, if you need, if you need, your twenty-four request whole, we've already given.
Right, yes, okay, I, that's where I was confused. I'm good now. So yes, I agree. Thank you for giving me that moment.
It was confusing.
Yeah, thank you for giving me that.
It was confusing. Um, do we have any other new business?
Uh, yes, um, Selectman O'Hare has brought forward a request, um, from, forward to you guys, and I have put the letter that he has drafted as long, along with the health bill, three forty-eight, um, Travis, would you like to explain?
Yeah, so I was reached out by Laconia City Councilor and State Rep, asking if the town would support this bill. Uh, this bill's to require proof of residency for town welfare, that you had to be in the town for at least ninety days, um, before you can apply for such assistance. The acceptable evidence for residency includes a lease, car registration, or utility bill in the town. They're just trying to put a little more guardrails on what is a resident before they can apply for town welfare.
Were you able to talk with Donna?
Yeah, I talked with Donna, she, she understands the purpose of it, she's not opposed to it, she thinks that could be a little more stricter on what they need for evidence, but she thinks it's a good start. She's wondering if, how legally it's gonna try and fight it, but that's up to the state to deal with in court.
Alright, so basically, all we're doing is supporting, at least supporting this bill, what happens is out of our control.
Yeah, this is just us saying, we support this bill, we'd like the committee to pass it.
Okay, alright, I don't have a problem with that.
I'll make a motion to support this bill.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And then I have the original, her route.
I second it.
Yeah, sent it.
And then I have the original for Ruth to sign on behalf of the board.
Okay, alright. Um, any other new business?
I do not have any to say.
Um, twenty-twenty-four default budget update.
So this is the last week where we, um, Steve notified all the department heads that this was the last week that we're going to accept any more twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four invoices, um, he only paid about, uh, from the operating budget, maybe about two to three thousand dollars out of twenty-four this week, so I think we've kind of come to one halt, uh, to a halt on all of the invoices that we were expecting for twenty-four. I do have the credit card bill for twenty, uh, December that we are gonna get today or tomorrow, is kind of the last thing that we're looking to pay, but all the legal bills have come in, all of the, our bills to the seller, our health insurance, all the big bills that are dedicated, anything little, you know, should be taken care of by now.
Minimum, yeah.
Um, so as far as numbers-wise, we ended at, um, ninety-five percent of a hundred percent, um.
That's a lot of, uh, that's great, um, and obviously, um, you and everybody in Town Hall, the finance department and everything, that's, it's been a lot to try to keep that under control.
Yeah, I, I, it was, it was an exercise, it was a, a year of learning, and, you know, moving money and creative thinking, and a lot of departments, you know, going without all year, and then kind of going to the end and saying, okay, you can go buy this or buy that.
Sure.
Um, but we did it, um, wasn't easy, uh, I, I worried about the fallout of some of the things that, you know, like Craig and the roads, you know, that, that big warrant article that did pass and that impact that's gonna have, I mean, the police department, you know, on, did not fund or did not, uh, fulfill some vacancies because we didn't have the funds, and we were a little bit of, of that.
Yeah.
Um, so how that has hurt their departments, um, we'll see, and hopefully going into twenty-five, and next month, we can get a, a pass budget, and they can get to hiring, and.
I just hope that, I just hope that everyone understands that, you know, it's just, if we, if we end up with another default budget, it's, it's really going to start affecting everyone, that is for sure. We've skimped by, we've, um, eliminated things, despite what some people felt we were punishing them, um, we weren't punishing, we were just trying to stay within the budget that they chose not to, or the budget, the pre, the default budget, obviously. So, um, and I think all of, of, all of our department has worked really hard through the budget process this year, um, we have kept everything as fine-tuned as we can, um, just, everyone has to understand, in fact, probably in about August, we'll be going into, um, union negotiations, which will be, um, highway, police, and fire. Um, and that's gonna be a struggle, obviously, and, um, you know, we appreciate, everyone's helping Town Hall, that's for sure, we know it's been hard. So, let's just hope we can get this. So let's just hope we can get this moved forward. It's gonna be so important. Um, okay, twenty twenty-five budget updates and changes.
Uh, yep, so you guys, I provided you all the, all the, um, the budget, the MS seven thirty-seven, which is the budget and all the warrant articles. It's all, all of that. We've had our public hearing with, uh, the budget committee. Um, all of the petition warrant articles have been submitted. Everything is in official form, so if there's anything missing or they're there, it is what it is. Um, the board, you have signed your two portions today and then the budget committee is coming trickling in the rest of this week and they will be.
Signing.
Um, signing as well and it'll be posted in the legal places that I'm required to post them by Friday. Um, we did, um, as I had informed the budget committee, when you compare the twenty-four request to the twenty-five request with all of the articles, all of the revenues, so you put all your, you know, your operating, your operating, your warrant, your additional warrant articles, and then you back out all your revenues, we were, we would have only had a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase to the budget had we passed last year to this year. So I think that is a testament to all of the departments with how much we've cut in the twenty-five budget and where we were created.
It is mine.
Yeah, basically, um, but if I'm balanced, who funds some of the, um, warrant articles this year? So I really hope people really get the voters guide, which will be available after the deliberative session because as you all know.
You can do it before.
The deliberative session is where there can be made final changes and I have to do the voters guide until after, um, which will be there for the changes. So after, cover it first, the voters guide will be available, which has great detail. Uh, a lot of thought goes into explaining all of the warrant articles, the reasons behind them. Um, I really, like I said, I was kind of going with that. There is a lot of articles that are funded through fund balance, which means not through taxation. So I hope people really take the time to look at each article and just vote no because they're not educating themselves on what they're on board on. Um, we did have two petitions come in, um, that last day, um, that we have put in. Uh, those were, one of them was to make the selectmen's meetings be after four P M. unless there's an emergency, that is advisory only.
I was gonna say, that, that wasn't.
No town meeting vote can, um, put those on the board selectmen. So it'll be advisory only and it will be the board, if there is this board or new board, who makes that determination after that town meeting.
So it's just one more article that's put on the voters guide?
I feel so.
Yeah.
And then the other one was, are you in favor of increasing, increasing the number of cemetery trustees from three to five?
How does it work if the public votes to bring this in and says?
Right, how do we, what, where we add them?
At the town meeting, at the town vote session, the election session, and the public votes to have us have afternoon and evening meetings.
Advisory.
It would be advisory. I mean, certainly you could say, well.
But if you, but if you do that, we've got to pay overtime.
Yeah.
Where's that money coming from?
It's, since it's not a binding one, they don't have to put the appropriation on it.
Right.
If it's not binding.
Because it's not binding, so then we'll have to.
They don't have to, they don't have to put the appropriation.
So even if they, the townspeople vote to do that, the select board can say, no, we don't want them?
Yeah.
Right, we can, we can, but the other issue is, is if the select board chooses to allow that, where are those funds coming from? So then each department has to now have funds to be able to cover for possible overtime to be at these meetings.
For the ones that are, for the non-servant employees, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's the other thing that's gotta be thought out. That should have been, that should have been explained on that petition, that, um, that's what's gonna happen. We'll need to, then your individual departments will, if they have someone here that's hourly, they've got to pay them.
Yeah, if it was binding, then there would have to be appropriation to it, but since it's not binding, there's no appropriation needed on it.
Okay, all right.
Well, I have a question.
What's that?
If this meeting was six o'clock right now, all the town employees in the audience, who would be getting overtime?
Two. Yeah, but that has to come out of their budget. You still have to pay them overtime and that's time and a half to be here, so it's just.
And how's to say, if you had it at night, how many town employees might want to come because they're gonna get, employees want to come and watch? And they're so, and so they can participate because of the, and voters.
Yeah, but they're only required to be here if we.
If there's something on the agenda for them, yeah.
Yeah, if we require them to be here, so if they want to show up, they can show up anytime.
Yeah, all right. Well, that's something that would have, that's up to the board when, but that should be, that should have been explained on that petition.
So what are we trying to gain from having it from days to nights? Do you think there's more people gonna show up at nighttime? We tried that and only one person was here from the public, one person.
We had less people at night than we did during the day.
Yeah, exactly. So what are we, what are they trying to prove?
Even the budget committee here in meetings, there was not maybe one, one, one month's meeting? I don't even think there was really. I think there was one meeting where we helped. We had more on Zoom than we did in person.
Of course, which they can do anytime. All right, well, it's, is, is what it is. It's just unfortunate because it just adds and, and my feeling is the more you have on it, the more no's you get. People just get, and they just, no, 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 so.
I will put in the voters guide that is advisory only and then I have a snippet of the RSA that says, you know, although that town meeting can't dictate, you know, this stuff to the board, that's.
Sure.
It's what's good for the, those five people operating the town, not for the one or two people who come.
Right. All right, well, you know, it's kind of embarrassing too when, you know, you, you put something on the ballot and then if it passes and then nobody shows up, you know, it's kind of on my gig. Okay, um, any other old business?
Um, I have the website and the, um, yeah, so, um, something to kind of think about.
Mutter?
If you can consider, yes, mull it over.
Mull it over.
Um, we started speaking with the new website company about what tasks they're gonna do, what tasks we're gonna do, um, and timelines of going live, um, and, you know, getting things set up. And one of the things is that they have the ability to be able to get all of our minutes transferred over to the new website in, you know, the format that it's going to be in over there for a hundred dollars per year, per board or commission. Um, the amount of time to manually move all of our minutes over to the new website would be very, very significant. Um, so he said that boards and commissions should give consideration to how many years' worth of minutes do they feel is important to keep on the website and have available for people on the website? Um, he said that some people are only doing two or three years, some people are doing five years, and that's typically the maximum that he's seen people do is about five years. I do know that unfortunately, there was a point when we transitioned over to the dot gov and there were a bunch of links for minutes that they did not properly transition and they have not all gotten fixed. So right now, we have about four or five years' worth of minutes that are available and nobody at town hall has had anyone call to say, hey, I'm looking for these minutes that are from twenty fourteen and I can't find them on your website. And by law, all minutes are required to be kept in an original hard copy format at town hall. They are not required by law to be.
That was gonna be my question, so even if.
But we want to have them available to people, you know, at least for, for current cases that they might want to look at, you know. I mean, I would say at least two years for board of selectmen. And then there's other boards like the trustees of the trust funds, they've already gotten back to me and said, listen, we think the current year and the prior year is good. They only have four meetings a year. So manually doing that is.
Minimal.
Yeah, it is minimal, but like, you know, maybe planning board and zoning board, I think those minutes get referenced a fair amount for people that are looking at similar types of applications, want to go back and, and look. So, you know, probably those would be advisable to transition over to board selectmen. I mean, we meet at least twice a month, plus there's all the budget workshops and things, so there's a significant amount of meetings to transfer compared to some of the other boards and commissions.
So if I wanted to look at something that was six years ago and, and, and say we chose that we only wanted to transfer three years, I can go into town hall and physically read those minutes. So they're available, it's just you have to go to town hall.
Always available.
So what we're talking about is.
That like if someone requested just one or two sets of minutes from somewhere, that, you know, maybe we would scan them and email them to them.
Sure.
If it's not a significant, you know, request type of thing, or if they knew exactly which ones. But sometimes it's like, oh, I'm looking for this, don't know when it was. Um, there's books available for conservation commission, planning board, um, and zoning board. There's hard copy books available right to the public in their office. And then, uh, the town clerk's office keeps copies of all of the other minutes for all of the other boards and commissions that are available.
Yes, Travis?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would say three years since it's a full term for a sitting selectman.
I was, that's, I was thinking three. Two's a little, but I was, in my brain, I was thinking three, you know, and then, but I guess, um, let's talk planning. Is planning gonna be fine with three or they're gonna make their own decision, I guess, I mean?
Yeah, I, I think they would probably make their own decision.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna bring it to them as part of my staff before. I have, we have a planning board meeting on Monday night, so that's convenient and I remember that's gonna be.
Well, that's what I was going to ask is who, is, who's gonna pay for that? Like example, the cemeteries.
Yeah.
Would that, say we move two hu, two years' worth, where is that two hundred dollars gonna come out of our budget or is it a camera thing?
Yeah.
But I.
Well, we, we, uh, we, um, we're taking the, the initial cost out of the capital reserve, but we hadn't discussed yet.
What to do with this.
How to fund the minute movements.
Right.
Um, I think you could, you know, if, you know, planning board says they want ten years, well, I think maybe they should pay for that or, you know, um, like you said.
They can build that into their funds of the application.
Some of them we may only do ourselves because there's four years, so it's not that bad. Um, so they would get a bill.
Do we know how many years it's been since we switched to the dot gov?
Thinking of like heritage, they don't have money in their funds.
Right, right, they don't.
To pay for theirs.
So I think I would go to that point because you said there's broken links and he said three years, twenty twenty-two, that's about three years. So maybe going just until we did that swap. That's right in the three-year mark.
Right, but when we did that swap, minutes were still available back as far as twenty twenty. So right now, there's approximately five years' worth that are currently available. And then the broken links are further back than twenty twenty, so it's not just to twenty twenty-two. That was when the transition happened.
Yeah.
But that's not when all the links broke.
Right. But I guess, you know, Sharon, stop and think of, let's just say the cemetery, okay? How often do they meet?
Once a month.
Once a month, okay? And, um, I guess, I mean, I've never, I've never looked back at, at, um, cemetery minutes, all right? So is it so important that they be online? I mean, that one person that needs, that wants to go back and look at the cemetery minutes? I mean, is it?
They are online though, are they?
Yeah, I, well, they are, but, but what I'm saying is, is how many people?
About a year and a half that we've been putting those online.
Right, so.
Each commission goes online as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just talked about it at the last meeting, they're gonna get rid of most of them. I think they're only gonna keep a year or two on there.
Yeah, only a year, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would.
I would think for the smaller things, I mean, it's only my, you know, because they can still get them. They can still go, if somebody needs it that bad, they can go into town hall, you know, I mean, I'm, you know.
Yeah, I'd say, I think the smaller committees, the, to, the current year and the prior year makes sense. Planning, I don't know much about them, so let them figure out their thing. Us, three years makes sense. Like, I think all the smaller commissions don't really need all of them online.
So three years plus the current year?
No, I'd just say the current, the total of three.
Total of three.
So really, it would be the current year and two years back. That would be the three years. That would be my thought. I mean, because again, if somebody really wants to know what we did as a select board at some meeting four or five years ago, stop into town hall.
And those are the rare, those are gonna be like the rare.
Right.
Very rare reason that someone might need it, probably most likely a lawsuit, which a lawyer would get ahold of anyways.
Anyways, that's right.
And those, those are still available electronically also, that, you know, if someone, like I said, just requested a onesie or twosie, it's the type of situation where we have them available and we can just email them right off. Because we've got this whole folder where all those things go to, they get posted on the website. So all those minutes from five, six, eight years ago, we still have access to those internally at town hall, even if they're not all linked, active and everything on the website. So even things within the last ten years or most of the groups are gonna be able to be provided fairly easily.
Yeah. I'm good with that. I would say, you know, three total, being current and two back.
You're the, you're the lady that runs those, so it's really your decision as far as.
And then the other boards will let us know what they decided.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, if like planning comes back and says, well, they want to post for the last ten years, okay, put that in your budget, you know, kind of thing. I mean, there is a limitation, you know, like obviously money's a limitation, but.
Because it's a hundred bucks a year, right?
It's a hundred dollars per year of minutes per board.
Yeah.
So.
No matter how much you put in? Or no, you, because you're gonna have to pay them?
It, it does, he said per year, per hour, per board.
Yeah.
Make sure he puts that in writing.
Yeah, put that in writing because.
Eleven minutes.
Put that in writing, sounds pretty cheap to me.
You know, third meeting, four.
Yeah, yeah.
But they do it per year.
All right.
They have like, you know, they have a way of doing it.
It's all automated for them.
Yeah, I know.
Click, click.
Yeah, yeah, all right, okay. You don't need a, it's just, yeah.
You guys are all kind of.
Okay, all right. Do we have any other old business?
Uh, I do not have any old business. Uh, I do see some people in the audience that aren't.
Does anyone have any comments at this point? Nobody wants to comment on anything? Okay. I asked, okay. Um, our next meeting at the moment is scheduled for February fifth. I assume ten o'clock right here. Um, do we have any non-public?
Um, we do have a non-public and I just want to say, um, we are discussing the I T R F Ps. You two are my I T people. I don't know whether to just tell them anything about the I T stuff. Um, I don't know if you want to say anything before they go into deliberation and we do a extensive talk, but if you want to step forward, you may, um.
I knew if you had my friend over. I know, I know, there's an opportunity to speak first. We would love to be your I T, uh, partner.
Do you mind?
Uh, yeah, come, come this way and.
Don't be afraid, step right up.
Come this way and tell us what, what company you're with.
So I'm with Umbrel Technologies. My name is Doug Poreier. Uh, we service many towns in, in New Hampshire. Um, we think that you guys are an ideal candidate for us, uh, given your size and your budget. Um, we, we love working with towns. You guys seem to pay on time and, uh, a lot of the towns, a lot of towns that we have really like us. So I, I hope they gave us some good references. You'll probably find out shortly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys.
I love it.
My name is Caleb Jacob. I own Eagle Network Solutions. Uh, we, I've owned it for over twenty years. Uh, we've done all kinds of verticals, uh, manufacturing, distribution. Uh, we got into towns about five or six years ago because of one of the reasons he said, I didn't realize you guys paid your bills on time. But more importantly, we actually, uh, forecast and budget. So we have a lot of companies where they'll run a computer in the ground till it dies. We have to go out there and it's an emergency. You guys actually plan what you're gonna do for like three and five year and that works so well for us. Um, like I said, uh, we're very, we'd be really happy to have you as a client. Uh, we actively go after towns. Uh, we have fifteen people, uh, for technicians and engineers, so we really know our stuff. Thank you very much.
All right. Awesome, thank you. All right, so we're all set then?
Yes.
All right, so this meeting is adjourned and we're going to go into non-public?
Travis, I see you talking.
All right, all right. John? Sharon, we're all.